The cost of building and, you know, this starts, if we start the project right now, just amending the TIP district takes at least six months. And so, we've got annexation before that can happen, some engineering studies before that can happen.
Greg's going to do some talk on that, yeah.
So, it's not like tomorrow, people are going to be, you know, contacting their contractors and locking that in. I'm thinking in eight to nine months, if, you know, if the cost of building is still up, that may be where it is. And, you know, this is the, you know, so we just, I think you just have to move forward. You can't just base something, you know, on where we are just this, right now. You know, if you, if you look at the way things have gone, it's, it's a little bit like this. Also, in the spreadsheet that Connor's been maintaining for us as we have costs in here, with a very conservative outlook, there's a $255,000 surplus in the end in the TIP fund with this. And that's with selling one home every year after it gets started. I think it's five, you know, in the first, what is that? Five in the first, what, two years or something?
Yeah.
Five in the first two years, then one every year for 17 years. Well, that's more than likely, based on what's happened in other communities that have done this. They sell those homes much quicker. It takes a little bit to get started, and then they just, they start selling. And our group would be willing to continue to work with the city, to help develop marketing, to make presentations at GSI, Sloans, anywhere. And, you know, it's to everybody's benefit for this to go, if it goes. And then, my hope would be that we'd enter into some kind of a option to buy more land than what we would initially buy. That does not obligate you to buy that land, that it would be, you know, with the whole houses, there would be an agreement that would say, if this goes well, you know, in five to eight years, you might say, hey, this went really well, we could use another one just like this next door, right next to it. And, so you'd have that option to buy already set up, but in the meantime, they, they would continue farming it. So, I don't know, anything else, Tom?
Well, I just, when you were saying that, I was thinking about Dietrich. And Dietrich's model was, especially it went so well that they kept expanding, and that's, they've gotten three subdivisions now, and that's kind of what our model is. And I, I think this is a win-win for the city and the area. Using the TIP fund like, you know, to our advantage, I think it's a win for us to do this, I really do.
Joyce spoke about Muequah adding on in the late eighties, early nineties?
Or even in the seventies, when, when Sloans and GSI were growing, we were just landlocked. There was nowhere to do that. And so, the east side of Muequah's got those beautiful homes, you know. So, would've been great to do this 30 years ago, but the next best time to do it's tomorrow.
And then, in that, in that packet that we had from ID, who was that, that survey that we had done?
Oh, Illinois Department of Housing.
Illinois Department of Housing. That was one of the big things that they said that was lacking in assumption. If I, I went through the notes a little bit tonight before the meeting, you know, that housing was lacking in assumption, was what they found through their audit. But, do you think it would be beneficial if you went, like, through this spreadsheet just a little bit, so for, so for the understanding of the dollars and, because I had heard that, like, Ameren's going to give the hundred percent back of the, so if you could, just, maybe just go through this spreadsheet a little bit for everyone's?
Yeah, does anyone need a copy?
Yeah, I'll get a copy.
Connor, I had asked you when the first meeting about the current cost, is this current cost?
Could you repeat that?
I had asked you about the cost you have here, is this current cost?
The only thing that's not current is gas, is about $4,000 higher. So, I got in 16, I think it's 23, I'm sorry. So, I'm off, I'm off $7,000 there. But, I rounded up $107,000, so.
I have an email that I received today from Ameren stating that our bills would be about $52 a month higher, starting immediately.
But, this is for electric being put in, is what you're talking about?
Correct. I'm just speaking for now.
Okay.
As to what expenses people are going to be facing on a monthly, monthly budget, that they're going to have $52 a month added to their Ameren bill.
Okay. This is just getting it into the development, and then as the lots sell, they will refund a hundred percent of the electric and the gas back to the city for that.
For the first 10 years.
Yeah. So, we can't, we can't address, I mean, bills, you know, utilities are going to change, they go up, we can't address that.
Yes, and I was also told that taxes would go up as well, property tax possibly.
Which is bad. It's not necessarily good for the homeowner, but for the city of assumption.
It's a good thing for us.
Because I'm using a, you know, a $200,000 home, an assessment, that's $5,500. So, if that does go up, you know, my numbers get even better if you're doing $6,000.
But, people's concern is their property taxes will go up as well, like other people here now.
Mary will, regardless of whether this happens or not, that's going to happen.
And I have been told that Dietrich has been successful because their, their fingertips are right at Effingham. And that a lot of the building and the success in Dietrich is because of Effingham being right there. That has been a huge boost for Dietrich.
You're exactly right.
And, you know, people's concern is, we don't have Effingham. We don't have anything here.
We have a lot here.
We don't have the bigger town.
We've got GSI, we've got Sloans, we've got a lot of people that drive to town.
Correct.
Every day. Cammer Village, the school district. We, it's pretty amazing what we've got in our community for this size. So, I, you know, we're looking at 16 lots, you know, not, you know, and you just.
Their concern was that we don't have someplace with the magnitude of Effingham.
And we've got the four-lane highway.
Correct.
So, we've got, we've got quite a bit here.
But, we don't, their concern, do you see where I'm, where they're trying to tell?
We don't have Effingham right next to us.
We don't have Effingham.
We've got Gator down the road, we've got Taylorville, very close, Payette, a lot of people drive to some of these communities.
Shelbyville, the lake.
I think Jackie has a question. I just have a quick. I hear a lot of people talking in my office and just around town, and I, I know that that's a concern, that we, who's going to build a house there? Well, we need to look outside of the people we know, who are our neighbors. There are a lot of people, and I have several friends in our school district now, who started out in Gator and other communities and wanted to get out of there, and they started their search in Warrensburg. No housing. Go to Argen and nothing. And they just kept going out, and they built in Muequah, because there was nothing here. So, I think that we are shortchanging our community by just focusing on here, or like one-income homes. Hey, not everyone can afford to build a home, but there are plenty of people who would. I mean, I would love to build something different in five to 10 years out there, and open up my price range of a home for a young couple coming up, you know? I mean, that's the way we have to look at it, is moving forward. It's not, I mean, we, as people build, other homes will open up that will fulfill that need of the people who maybe don't want to build a big home.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right, Jackie. And Kara Hugner couldn't be here tonight, but she mentioned after the last meeting when we went over this, outside, she said, people are always looking for homes in assumption, and I have nothing to show them. And, you know, in the price range that they want, I mean, that's, you saw from my presentation before where our housing is right now. I mean, forty, almost 47% of our housing, almost, you know, almost a little less than 50%, but a lot of it was built before 1940. I mean, that's where we are, and that, that's why a lot of the houses look the way they are.
And that's kind of what the survey showed too, that are, that are the same thing on your sheet, which was the 59,000, or, yeah, 23% of the houses are valued underneath, under 50,000. And I think that was some of the things that we found in the audit also.
Yeah. It was interesting back when the old high school, that's where Diane White lives now, and Carl Krasin's home, Irma Jacobs and Don Kent's, though, when that, when that old high school was taken down, immediately, there's four retired farmers, well, Betty Sloan was, or Carl Krasin, she was a retired farmer, but anyway, she moved across the street. But, anyway, you know, retired farmers bought those lots, built beautiful homes on it, you know, and, you know, I just don't think we should underestimate what can happen. And, as you say with this TIP district, you've got to use that tool, and this is a perfect opportunity. The, you know, the estimate, the estimate for the month, you know, for the annual payback to the bank is $60,000. I mean, right now, you're getting $76,000 last year in TIP funds, and that's only going to grow. I mean, Sloans have got a new building, they're building another one, there's, you know, that just continues to grow. It never gets smaller than that. Annually, you're going to get that. So, you know, it just seems like our local bank is working with us on a very reasonable interest rate at 3.75% for five years. And I talked to Mike today, he said, if people are concerned about that, he says, I'll go 10, 10 years at 4%. So, that, you know, that may be good in 10 years, or you may wish you'd have left it at five, or three, three, you know, whatever, but he is really going to work with the community, seeing this as a big boon. And of course, you know, there's more, hopefully, as lots sell, people, you know, work at financing through our local bank. And so, it just, this kind of thing just brings more energy to the community.
Well, I think, I think where I live is a perfect example. Doris Krasin built a, a home first, on the end of, edge of town, and then Sam Sabika did. And then, yes, when we decided to build, we could've gotten one of the lots in town, but that's not what we wanted. We wanted to kind of be on the edge of town. There wasn't any trees, there wasn't plumbing out there or anything. And what happened, then we built, and then the next house is out there. You know, now that, granted, that took quite a while from the time Doris built, but it was the edge, it's the edge of town, and it's all newer homes. There's an example there. People don't always want to build on the lots that are already available.
And what, what those lots were already, you either, you had to kind of work at getting those lots prepared, where this would be.
Yes, this is already done, and, but location's the key. And sometimes, when that first house started, meaning Doris, it will, once it goes up, a new home, then that kind of like, oh, I think I, you know, like to do that, be out on the outskirts or.
It's a great location, right near the school.
It is.
You can see a little trail going over the school, the playground, you know, so, anyway.
And, you know, I'm a transplant, you know, Donnie's a transplant here as well. Candy, I know, is not born and raised here. So, it does, I mean, new, new houses will bring new people in.
Yes.
You know, just not people within town will live, will probably do it, but it will bring people in. And, I mean, I, I was fortunate enough to get the house that I'm in, but I tell you, it came, three other people I know wanted the house that I was in, because my realtor had told me. And I was just fortunate enough that I, my realtor caught it on a Tuesday, went and saw it on this Friday, and I bought it on a Sunday. So, but, like I said, it, it brought me here into this community from Shelbyville, so.
Well, and as Joyce said the other night at mapping, it was, that was a major thing, what, and we speak for the people. The people wanted, want new homes. And that was a real eye-opener, you know, the amount that, that was top priority was homes.
By a long shot.
By a long shot. And so, we are the voice of the people.
And then, also to be clear, the actual vote we're voting on today is?
Well, I have what the motion will be.
I have.
I mean, it'd be like, a motion to approve engineering and legal feasibility study regarding the grow assumption proposal for potential city expansion.
Yeah, so we're not asking the city assumption to write a check.
Yeah, I know.
No, no, we know that.
But, it's giving the calls.
We know that.
Yes.
They got her.
You guys got it, but, no, we're not, number one, it's not the city of assumption building a high-rise out there, right? Just to move forward, to maybe start seeing if we can get interest, and then maybe walk through those steps.
Sure.
Right? Because if, let's say if we started doing this and no one wanted to build an assumption, no one wants to move to assumption, well, it's not, you know, it won't work, and we rely on no risk to the, very, very little risk to the city.
Right.
Can you walk through the step, I think this is kind of the question a lot of people have, I was, can you walk through the steps of life, from where we are right now, past the questions tonight?
But, you want, you want three? Yeah, let's have the attorney talk about that.
See, that's why I was wondering what, what their kind of steps were, and then, since you've actually had experience, if you can kind of give your, your take on, you know, what the experience you've had with the other communities that have done this, compared to the steps that we're kind of looking at in advance, if that's okay?
Is there somebody that has a question?
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
If, I mean, Mayor, what you described, which, the motion you're going to vote on, is not what's on your agenda. You're voting on engineering studies?
Well, just, we're beginning the, the proposal to expand housing in assumption, and we would be authorizing an expenditure to that then.
But, that's not what that says. Just giving you a heads up, because if that's what you vote on, from a local government accountability, we'll challenge that. I would urge that you clean up the agenda, be more specific, to inform the public exactly what you're voting on, because what you described is a lot more than what's on the agenda.
Go ahead. I think it reasonably describes what we've been going forward, but, okay.
Who's we? Who's we? Would you identify that?
The Edgar County Watch Dogs.
You will question that.
Yeah, we're a local government accountability nonprofit, and part of what we do is focus on compliance with Local Meetings Act and FOIA, and this is one of the items that we typically see, is action taken that's not clarified on an agenda to inform the public with sufficient information. I understand you wanted to vote on the proposal, I get that, but I'm assuming this is the proposal.
Which was presented at our last board meeting.
Right. Well, this doesn't talk about an engineering study that you're going to spend money on.
Um, under infrastructure engineering, the $10,000 in cost.
But, this is a contractor's proposal, I'm assuming, or private?
No.
Whose is this?
This is just, this is just an estimate.
This is from grow assumption, from, from the group that presented the proposal.
This is their proposal, not your proposal for engineering costs.
Correct.
This is just our estimate on how this would work.
You have legal counsel, you do what you want to do. My suggestion is just a suggestion, and you know where we stand, Mayor.
I have something that was brought to me, and I was asked to read this tonight, because the people cannot be here. This is from Joe and Jody Mink, and they have some concerns that we are taking this on, but we also have the water and sewer plant, or the water and sewer project also have the water plant going on. And the increase for the Phase Two sewer has increased like 50%, over 50% increase in cost of the water plant, a 50% increase for roads. He said, replacement of water lines in assumption because of rusty pipes and water leaks. And we also have some concern because of TIP money being taken away from the fire department, the ambulance, the library, small businesses, and schools. And that is their concern. This is from Joe and Jody Mink, they could not be here. He said he has been paying attention to the water meetings and to Mark Bingham and that, and the increases that we are facing with the, you know, ex, all the increase on the water plant, and the increase on Phase Two of the sewer, the sewer project, and then the water lines being replaced. He said that's going to be considerably higher than what we had budgeted for.
But, we, we're also kind of working on that on a congressional level, by meeting with Congressman Davis to try to get some more federal funding, also talking with Senator Durbin's office. But, some of that, we can't use from, from the TIP fund. Now, granted, the library has, nobody, the school has come and mentioned that they would possibly like some TIP money. I asked Courtney for a dollar amount, I have yet to get that. But, no, the only taxing body that's come and asked is the library, and we did appropriate at least $8,000 for them, so they can get some renovations done. So, we have some money there for them, but nobody else has asked, I mean, other than the school. And that was three weeks ago, and Courtney has yet to give me a dollar amount. Granted, they're working on a master capital plan, but I even told her, I said, we can give you the money, we just, depending upon how much it is, we may not be able to give it to you all in one year, it may have to be over two years. So, I'm not going to de- deny anybody, whether it be the fire department, the ambulance, if they, send me a, send me something, come here and ask for it, and we'll try to make it work the best that we can. You may not get it all upfront, but you will get it at some point. I have that as, as a word, I mean.
I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah, no, I did it, I did it, but I'm just saying.
What they have asked me to speak for them.
Could I just say something? It's just, those funds, and I don't dispute what they're saying about the water and sewer and the price and everything, but that's just completely separate from the, from the TIP.
It is completely separate, but the city still has to pay for this stuff.
Yeah.
One way or the other, the city has to pay for it.
Right.
We hopefully will get grants, we already have a $2 million grant for the water plant, but then we may have $2 million to pay on the city as well.
That may happen, Suzy, but what I'm saying is, whether the TIP money, I mean, that, that has nothing to do with that.
No, it doesn't. It's the city paying for it. The city cannot, what their concern is, okay? What his concern is, what her concern is, the city is taking on more than they can pay for.
They, well, I don't know how to say it any differently. Those, the TIP funds will not help with the sewer or the water.
No, it will not.
So, that's all I'm saying.
That has nothing to do with the city.
It has nothing to do with, okay, as long as you understand that.
That has nothing to do with the city coming up with money.
And what we would end up with, with this, with this development, in a very conservative setting, you're going to end up with $255,000 more in TIP than you would if you didn't do this development at all. And that's if, most conservative, will probably be more than that. So, I'm just saying.
Do you realize, Joyce, these people are looking in their lifetime? That's what they're concerned about, their lifetime.
This development has, will have no impact on what's happening with the sewer and the water. That's what I'm saying, it's backwards and oranges, so, I don't, you know, I guess I don't have to say it any differently.
I mean, this isn't coming out of the general fund, right?
No, this is not.
That city, the TIP fund is a completely separate thing.
Completely separate. And I'm not even talking about TIP right now.
Well, this, this is all, this is all this is. The incomes and the expenses, a hundred percent are dealt with the TIP funds, nothing out of the city. And in fact, the TIP fund will be bigger when you're finished.
But, what they're not realizing is, this is, this is down the road. This is not in their lifetime.
What?
The $255,000.
Well, it, it could, 17 years.
Yeah.
I mean, it very well could be.
Do they have kids in the districts?
I mean, do they care about what's going to happen in the future? I mean, I might not be here in 17 years either, but I'm just saying.
Well, but, see, see, their concern is now. That's their concern. His property value now is what he's concerned about.
Okay.
I mean, I, you know, when these people reach out to me, I try to understand, and I try to be their voice here, because this is important to them, okay? And if they can't be here, that's what I'm trying to do, is explain what they feel.
I have a quick question, then, just if we're clarifying TIP and what pays for what. So, say we don't do this at all, and there's currently a surplus of a hundred and some thousand dollars, what, is that what it is in?
Roughly about right, it's about right, I think, about a hundred and some thousand.
What does, what can that pay for? What, what wouldn't you, I mean?
Well, we could use it for some, some taxing bodies, yeah.
Taxing body that hasn't come to you and asked for any money. How's that like?
Yes, not yet, yes.
Or if a new company would say they want to come to town and do something in a, in a TIP area, they, the city might cut them a deal or.
Exactly. We are kind of possibly working on something for salons, dealing with some sanitary issues. So, that is something that we could use that for.
So, that's one, that's the beauty of using the TIP to build new things, because it's like a snowball rolling down a hill. It gets bigger and bigger and bigger as you go down the hill. It could sit at the top of the hill, and you just keep it there, that's where it's going to stay, just right like that. But, this TIP, you've got to use it to make it pay back, and it, it will not have anything, your taxes are going to go up, things are going to happen in the world, your, you know, the city's going to have other issues, that's completely separate from this and.
We need to use it to grow assumption.
Exactly, exactly. So, that's, and I, I know Jody and Joe very well, I'll give Jody a call, and we'll, I'll get with him and.
I just say, do you want to do that now, or do you want to do it at the next meeting?
Well, I'm kind of talking to legal counsel, we're going to probably table this until the council meeting, just so that we can clear up things even on the agenda, but I'll turn it over to Greg for a while, but.
Yeah, so, just to answer your question, so, the proposal that we received has a whole bunch of moving parts, and we saw the presentation from Grow Assumptions at our meeting this month, and so, we're going to need to take this in a lot of phases. And so, Phase One is just figuring out whether or not the proposal, which was presented in concept form, is actually feasible. And that'll take research from engineering on, on the land, to make sure that there's proper drainage, and make sure that it's the right spot and something that they would recommend. And it's going to take research from myself and our TIP counsel to make sure that we can actually do what's been presented to the city. So, that, that's step one, and that's what's going to be presented at next week's meeting, just to see if we can even do that. As part of that, we're going to begin also seeing if there's any interest from the community in this, because one of the, one of the factors that was proposed was that this would be contingent on receiving at least four commitments of purchases, so, but getting a little ahead of ourselves. So, what we would agree to do is, we would agree, we would enter into an annexation agreement for this property, which would be contingent upon the city actually purchasing the property, which is contingent upon TIP council confirming that that can be put in the TIP, and the purchase would also be contingent on receiving those four letters of, or four letters of intent for purchase in the, in the lots. So, you have all these contingencies, and you, you'll need to vote on all of those, and so, we, those are all way down the road, and they, those will be presented to the board for their approval at each stage. But, once those are entered in, and the city's committed, then if those contingencies are met, we are annexing, we're annexing the property in, we're purchasing the property, rezoning the property, because we're probably going to come in ag, so we're going to rezone the property, and then enter into those agreements with the purchasers. We're also going to have agreements for infrastructure, and how that gets placed, and none of that has been determined yet, we haven't even started, because we're, we're not there, we're not.
Yeah.
The purpose of this meeting is to just see if it's something that council even wants to entertain, so further discussion, building on what was presented to us at the last meeting, and then we'll, we'll go for, go for a vote. Certainly don't want any confusion with the public about what we're voting on, so to the extent there was, we just table it, and clarify exactly what portion of risk we're going to be, while looking at it voting on next week.
Where, where does this money come out of that, that we would vote on? Like, for the engineering, where, where does that money?
That would come out of TIP.
It will come out of TIP?
Yes. Once we get everything, because we'll have to get the, we'll start with the annexation, and then putting it all into the TIP, that will come out of the TIP fund.
I think it's true that all the expenses on here come out of TIP, all the income.
and then putting it all into the, that will come out of the TIF fund.
I think it's true that all the expenses on here come out of TIF, all the income go into TIF, so it's completely separate from any other expenditures the city has, you know, issue. And one, one other thing I'd like to mention is, before we get to the point where we're talking to the public about, about, you know, it would be, our hope would be that the development would have some covenant agreements where there'd be some, this is what Dietrich has found has been very helpful, that they, you know, people sign some kind of a buyer's agreement that states, you know, a minimum number of square feet for the home, a minimum number of, I mean, not a maximum number of pets that they can have. They have found the, it helpful to not put up wooden fences, so they outlaw wooden fences. They have, you know, various things that they have found has kept their development looking good, and with people going into it knowing, knowing those things, so that would be another thing that we might, our group would be glad to pull some of that together to go over with the council at some point. We, we would hope to continue, if this can move forward, to continue work with the council very closely, maybe have a couple of you on the, the group that meets regularly, and, you know, have...
So Greg, we need to make a...
We'll just table it, we don't need a motion or anything, we'll just table it.
Yeah, we're just not gonna take any action on it today.
At all.
Correct.
Even move, we need to think about moving forward.
Yeah, we're just gonna take discussion, and...
We'll have, meeting is next week, or two weeks.
Next week.
First, yes, June first.
It's actually brief in the day. Yeah? All right. You have anything else?
I thank you.
Yeah, thank you, very much.
I have another question.
Go ahead, Angel.
My question is going to be, if we do this, we're not gonna get TIF money for what, two to three years probably, so in that meantime, we roughly get $78,000 in TIF money a year right now, but we're also gonna have to pay the mortgage $61,000 a year, so that's gonna leave us about $17,000.
What mortgage? Are you talking about from when we started TIF?
No, no, you're gonna get the mortgage to start.
Oh, the bar, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
A bar, I'm sorry, it says mortgage on here, mortgage information. So that would roughly leave us $17,000 a year for the first three to four years until we start...
But we do have that surplus in there, though, please remember that. We do have that, that surplus, that cushion, for we haven't been spending TIF money, so we do have that cushion.
And also, you don't have to borrow the whole thing.
Yeah, one time, we can borrow in stages, yes.
As needed, you would borrow it, but you're right, it will...
So, I mean, it's gonna be tough probably for the first two to three years, until after the money actually starts coming in.
Hopefully we have, the, you know, we, we're gonna have some pre-sold, hopefully it's not four years, hopefully it's closer to that, one, you know, one or two.
Well, I just, I just figured by the time you get the roads in, and we get the electrical, and the water, the sewer and everything rain, that's gonna take you, I mean, you're not gonna get done, we're not, so, six, eight months maybe, longer to do that, and then you're gonna give the buyer a year to build, so there we're looking at almost two years, and then by the time that gets there going, and it gets onto the TIF, you're looking at another six to eight, maybe 12 months, so you're looking at close to three years before the money starts coming in.
So how are you gonna pay that?
I mean, obviously, yes, we would need the $80,000, you know, as the...
That would come out of the TIF fund.
How are you gonna pay it if it's not there?
It is there.
Well, we do have it there now, but that's what I'm saying, it's going to drivel down here.
You get $76,000 on top of what's already there, which is 100 and some now, so every year you're getting more and more.
And how are you going to help the other places that need TIF money?
You would have, you're still surplus beyond that.
About 17, about 17,000.
And they have to come to us, we can't willy-nilly just give them money. I mean, if, like I said, if the school wants their, their sign, then have them come to us with a dollar amount. I mean, we can sit here and say, "Yeah, we'll give money to any business," but have them come. Till they show up with an actual dollar amount, we can't really finagle and say how much. I mean, I give them my word, we'll, we'll give them as much as we can, but right now we don't have anything in the hopper, other than the, other than the school and the library, which we've already appropriated $8,000 for the library in this budget. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Tom.
Say, Fire District, what percent of the total tax revenue does Fire District get?
That I really honestly don't really...
I'm, I'm just saying, so if, if we've increased the tax base by 70,000, whatever, 80,000, whatever the amount is, what actual amount are these entities losing out on?
I see what you're saying.
So is the library losing out on 5,000 here, or are they losing out on 500 here?
Yeah, that I, I have to look into and see.
That would be something interesting to know.
I mean, so, yeah, you know, they say, "Well, we're losing out on tax money," how much are they losing out on?
And they shouldn't probably be getting more than what they're losing out on.
That what they're losing out on, that's true.
So, you know, you've gotta be careful with that.
No, you're, you're right, yes.
You don't say, "Well, we got all this money here, let's give it to," you know, I mean, it needs to, there needs to be some thought.
That's exactly it, you're asking, correct.
Or stop and give it to the, maybe Y-Bird.
I'll have to, I'll look into the hands.
It's important that they get money, you know.
Yeah, no, I, I 100% agree with you on that.
That's one thing.
When people come to me and have these questions, I need answers. I have to have answers to give them, because they, I've had a lot of skeptical people, and I don't have answers to give them. Address them to Joyce, to all these, these people that are... Well, Joyce can't get...
We've got numbers, we've got numbers on here.
I know, and, and some of the people don't just wanna see a piece of paper. They want facts.
We'd be glad to, we'd be glad to meet with them and go over it, you know, we're not saying that there's, that, that there's not any, you know, this is not gonna happen just exactly the way we've got it on a piece of paper, these are estimates, like what you do with an Excel spreadsheet. We've tried to be as conservative as possible, throwing in extra money on the expense side, really being very conservative on the income side, and it still looks very good at the bottom. So I'd be glad to go over, Connor knows these numbers inside and out. If there's any questions, let's go over, because there's, what I've been hearing, any negatives, there's been a lot of misunderstanding on it, just like where the funds are coming down. This is 100% TIF.
I think it would be good...
Money going out and money coming in, it has no impact whatsoever on any other expenses that the city has.
I think it would be good for Adam Mathias to be involved in this.
I can invite him to the meeting.
He...
I did reach out to him, but I have not heard back from him, but I could tell him...
I would like for him to be involved, I know a lot of people have asked if he's going to be involved in this.
But, but what do you expect out of him, though? What do you want?
I think that they want his opinion, as to, you know, if...
Would you want it in writing?
Would, ahead of time?
No, let's do this all in the public, we're gonna do it all out in the open, so I'll tell him to come.
I want everybody to have the opportunity to be...
Well, I'll have him come to the meeting.
They, you know, but what you might wanna do there, Derek, is have him see the presentation so that...
Well, I'll see if I can get him to, yeah.
He's coming to the meeting, he's gonna have all the questions that have already been, we've already gone over.
Gone over.
You know, and he's gonna, we don't need to sit and, you know...
And I have been asked if he is included in this.
Yeah, that's, I think it's great of you.
I don't know, so...
We would, we would welcome him.
Yeah, I'll, I mean, I know he's not at his office now, but I mean, I'll call again tomorrow, I know some, he's out auditing other municipalities right now.
So he'd have heard it.
If you want to use one, so you can, yes, you're more than welcome to call him, yeah.
We could at least, just showing what we've...
Yeah, if you, if you want to. Is he gonna be, is he gonna be here tomorrow?
He should be at City Hall tomorrow, he's auditing this right now.
Oh, is he tomorrow?
So he should be up here tomorrow, for City Hall, so...
Eric, did you have other questions? Okay. Watch it off.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just had a quick comment, I think you alluded to it in regards to the Fire District. One of the things we see as a common practice with the TIF side of it, if the TIF money, you know, they're not gonna, say it's 500 bucks they would've got if it was not part of the TIF, they utilize that as an offset, they give that difference of what they would've had that they're not giving. We've seen communities do that where technically they're still getting their money.
Their money, yes.
It's just not from that tax, they identify whatever they figure, we have seen that pretty common up north.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that way they're not out because of the TIF side of it.
Then they're not necessarily getting more.
Okay, yeah, you're, yeah.
Right. And I think you alluded to that, and that's, yeah, that's what we see a lot of them do.
Well, and for the folks that, that, that aren't sure, and they have questions and stuff, they've gotta reach out to people and come to these meetings. Where's our audience at tonight? Where was our audience at at the last meeting?
Yeah.
You know, the, I think the city does a good job of, of saying when our meetings are, where they are, and what time they are, so if you have questions and you're, you don't think it's a good thing, then come and ask the questions, and look at the sheets, and, and get involved besides just saying, you know, "We don't wanna do it."
And Suzy, you wouldn't want, none of us know everything like they do. So if people are approaching you, and you don't have an answer, probably not, I wouldn't have an answer.
I told them to come to the meeting.
That's what these guys are for, to explain this.
I told them to come to the meeting, that's what I told them. Come to the meeting.
Okay, so if they aren't moving forward with being involved and coming forward, then... I think this...
All right. Do you have anything else? We'll make a motion, go ahead, Tom.
What do you manage TIF? It's a great tool, but I think you gotta be careful about giving them more than they would've gotten anyway. If their, if their tax money is frozen at X, you don't wanna get them X times two, you know what I'm, you know what I'm saying? I mean, I think you gotta be careful about how you manage.
I'll talk to Jordan and Anna about that. I, I just know that they came to a, to a financial, a finance meeting, we was working on budgets, and they said, "Hey, they would like to do a whole bunch of tile work," and, and, and they kinda were spitballing, now there's, I talked to Kim today, that they're gonna get some quotes next week, so we'll kind of work on that, but that, and I see your point, but, you know, these other places, they have to ask, and, you know, we'll, we'll go from there, but, and, and if, and, and they still have to approve, so they can come in and say $8,000, we'll be like, "Oh, oh, no, we'll give you $3,000 on it." It was just a conversation that was done between Anna and, and the camp, and the finance committee, so...
Would it be possible to go ahead and just assign the money to these, these entities that would have blacked it?
You want to, well, I mean, go ahead, Greg. Do they have to ask?
That kind of defeats the...
Hang on.
If you, if you take all the money...
So I'm not saying all the money, Joyce, just like the Fire District should've gotten $500 of it, just making that every year.
I prefer that they come and ask, so we know what they're using it for, to make sure that it's a TIF-eligible project, to, and, but also, you know, there might be, there might be some that don't want that much, so we're not just giving money that's going